Introduce Andy Chompco, Vice President of Veterans Organization Fight for Vets. Last year had fights for vets to help for service dogs. Andy's gonna be doing our Pledge Allegiance Day. Andy, would you please step up to the podium? Andy is a United States Army Airborne Ranger Veteran. He has achieved the rank of Corporal and served in Afghanistan and Iraq. Medals of Merit include Joint Service Achievement Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Good Conduct, National Defense Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Global War on Terror, and Service Medal. He's an Iraq Campaign Medal Combat Infantry Badge, Expert Infantry Badge, Parachute Badge, and Australian Commando Parachute Badge. Andy, thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, whenever you want to stand for a moment of silence. It's a moment of silence for in Austin. You know, this is horrible what's going on in Austin, Texas with all the bombings that are going on. Please try to keep the loved ones of the individuals who lost their lives in Austin and those who are trying to recuperate, your thoughts and prayers. Also, in Great Mills High School in Maryland, a student, two students were shot by another student. But this situation, the resource officer actually encountered them and stopped the situation as it was going on. So I'd like to keep those two students and our thoughts and prayers too. And also, we lost two police officers. Ryan Morton of Missouri and Scott Hamilton of Kentucky lost their lives in line of duty. Please keep them and their families and our thoughts and prayers as our days go by. Thank you. Andy, thank you for your service, and we'll be seeing you really soon when you come in to talk about the Fight for Vets. At this time, I'd like to bring the Wednesday, March 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners mean to order 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room. Can I, I'd like to make a motion for the reading in minutes. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Terriani.
Yes.
Yes. At this time, we're gonna go to proclamation presentation, but what we do have coming up this week is actually a great draw to Lackawanna County. We're gonna be hosting not one Pennsylvania Golden Gloves, but we're gonna actually be holding two. I was wondering if Mr. Doug Long is in the audience? Doug, would you like to come up and say a few words? And Doug, do you have a, okay.
Again, thank you Commissioners, Doug Long. And before I start on the Pennsylvania Golden Gloves, Andy, awesome to work with you. Everybody said the Italian Festival only eat pizza. They don't stray off from the sidewalks. We had 1,400 people at the Fight for Vets, and Andy's the Vice President. We raised a lot of money. We bought a service dog, as we sit here now, for a vet that needed a service dog through the Fight for Vets. And we'll be back again during the Italian Festival. And Andy, I just want to thank you. It was an honor to work with your charity organization, and we're planning on doing another event on with Andy. So again, I'd like to give a nice applause for Andy and his service. What a great service work he's done. The Pennsylvania Golden Gloves has been around with me since 1994, and I've never hosted with my group a back-to-back boxing show. So it's, that's why I lost about 10 pounds right now, so I'll be glad to eat on Sunday. It's a two-day event, and you'll have the semifinals for the state coming and staying in hotel rooms, eating, utilizing our area. For Lackawanna County, it's huge. We bid on it against Bethlehem and several other areas, and Dixon City Hyundai really wanted both events here. So the boys and girls that'll be fighting on Friday will watch them fight the championships the following day on Saturday night. So hosting the championships is an honor. It really is for Lackawanna County. It's huge. There's kids that are in project areas that, clubs that, we're sitting here today that this is what, all they have is to go to that gym in certain areas of the state and the city. So we have to keep in mind what an honor for them to get up in the ring and for us to host it. And I really am thrilled about it. Thrilled that no one realizes the quiet guy here. Tommy Gibson is fighting. He works at Clerk of Judicial Records, and he's, works under Maury Kelly. Maury's excited, but she doesn't like to go to the fight. She's out in the doorway. And I just got released yesterday. Tommy's fighting the fifth fight, and he'll be fighting against Buddy Bells from Cameron Street Gym. Hope to God we'll keep us our prayers that everybody stays safe, but Tommy will advance to the big championship on Saturday night for our county and represent working here at the county. So maybe Tommy could say a few words on behalf of the county for two more minutes? Tommy?
Tommy, good luck first and foremost.
Oh, thank you very much. It's really an honor, honor to be fighting in the Golden Gloves and representing Lackawanna County. It's great for the county, for one thing. Doug Long, Gene Reed from the Irish Boxing Club, they do a great job to have all your local folks out and, you know, just supporting all the boxing in Scranton. You know, there's a lot of heritage in Scranton of boxing, and it's just a great opportunity to just keep on, just keep the boxing alive in Scranton.
There's a lot of history here, lots of history.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm just excited to be representing Lackawanna County and be fighting in the Golden Gloves, and it's an honor.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
The only thing I'll close with, we're Tommy, and then I'll close with this, is he fought against one of our headliners in our gym, and everybody saw the soft-spoken Tommy. Does he look like a fighter? He fought a draw almost to one of our headliners at the Irish Boxing Club, and everybody, when he left the ring, said, "Who's this guy, Tommy Gibson?" So he's the quiet one that'll get in the ring and hopefully represent us well. And thank you Commissioners. It's a great event. It's this weekend already, Friday and Saturday, both nights in our county. Thank you Commissioners.
Commissioner Cummings?
Well, good luck, and thank you so much for all that you're doing. It's a great cause.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Good luck, and what weight do you fight at?
Uh, 165, middleweight.
Middleweight.
Yeah, well, good luck, and I hope it works out well, and hope to see you there Saturday.
Keep your hands up. Keep your hands up, your butt off the floor, please.
Again, thank you.
Well, thanks for coming. Doug, thank you for what you, you're promoting and what Gene Reed does with his fighters. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we have proclamation 18-0077. This is for Casual Day. Who do we have here from?
Karen's.
Was Karen's here? Good. We did the minutes, yep. Karen, would you like to come up to the podium? Karen, we're gonna read a proclamation for you, but I want you to talk a little bit about how this really matters and how easy it is basically to get tested and checked out so that there's no issues.
Correct.
We'd like, yeah.
Speak first.
Sure.
I just want to thank you for having me here again. This is the 15th Annual Casual Day. It's an acronym for Colon Cancer Awareness Saves Unlimited Adult Lives. This started 15 years ago with a family that came to the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute. Their mother had died, diagnosed with late-stage colon cancer. She had not had a colonoscopy, and the family said to the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute, "If we can prevent one other person, one other family, from having to go through this awful incidence of death, perhaps needlessly, we want to do that." So together with knowing the data that we have at the Cancer Institute is that the incidence and mortality rate of colon cancer here is higher than the national, the state and national average, we want to do something about it. Casual Day is an educational outreach, informational, as well as a fundraiser for the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute. Through this event, we educate people to please speak with your family physician, to be screened for colon cancer, and to have a casual conversation with your family and friends about the importance of it, to urge each other on to make sure that we get screened. The importance, the significance is catching colon cancer early when it's more treatable. The Northeast Regional Cancer Institute is a nonprofit, celebrating 26 years in the community, and we are an information and resource for anything related to cancer, and we are available, we're a phone call away. We have offices in Scranton as well as in Wilkes-Barre. Thank you for acknowledging this event every year. We really appreciate it, and I have new 2018 Casual Day pins for each of you today.
Commissioner Cummings? Well, thank you for all the work that you're doing, and I appreciate you taking the time to come out and try and increase the awareness of your program. Thanks so much.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's something that I'm very interested in, and a classmate came across the baseball stadium and came into the box I was in and said, "You're 50 now. You have to go." Because he had ended up with colon cancer.
Mm-hmm.
And I said, "Oh." He said, "No, you have to go." And if I didn't go, I would have, there's a pileup, and I have to go regularly.
I think he'd be honored if you mentioned his name.
It was Judge Carmen Menour.
Who was the spokesperson for the Cancer Institute for this campaign many years ago?
Yeah. He actually, if it wasn't for Carmen coming and encouraging me to go, I probably wouldn't have.
That's exactly the point of the whole event, and that's wonderful. Thank you for sharing.
It did make a difference in my life, so I want to thank what you do and Carmen and everybody involved in it. It's, you're right, it's very important.
Mm-hmm.
I would also like to actually thank Carmen Menour. He's the one actually brought it to my attention. We were doing a show on ECTV, and it was about colon rectal cancer, and I was only in my 30s. He said, "Once you get into your 40s, make sure you go and get checked." Because he got checked, and if he didn't, he wouldn't have been, he wouldn't be here. That's what he said.
The only problem is he wanted to name it the Carmen Oss could be instead of the colon.
I'm not sure if we'd agree on that one, we'll have to see. But no, he pushed really hard. He made sure that that was put out throughout the whole community and made sure, especially all his brothers and stuff, everybody was checked. But we have a proclamation here. Whereas Pennsylvania, with an incidence and mortality rate in some areas as much as 15% higher than the U.S. average, whereas 75% new cases of colon rectal cancer occur in patients, average risk is approximately 525 new cases are diagnosed. Over 200 patients die from colon cancer each year, which can really be, could be prevented in the counties of Lackawanna, Luzerne, Monroe, Pike, Susquehanna, Wayne, Wyoming combined. Whereas Northeast Regional Institute has been easing the burden of cancer in northeast Pennsylvania for over 25 years through the community and patient services, hospital and practice support services, cancer surveillance programs specifically designed to meet the unique needs of our region. Whereas on Thursday, March 29, 2018, Northeast Regional Cancer Institute will sponsor its 15th Annual Casual Day. Colon Cancer Awareness Serves Unlimited Adult Lives Day. Whereas Casual Day was established by the family of Helen Phillips, who fought a courageous battle against colon cancer and died in the summer of 2002. Now therefore, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, does hereby urge residents for screening for early detection of colon cancer and participate and support the Northeast Regional Cancer Institute in its colon cancer awareness efforts and proclaim March 29, 2018, on behalf of 214,000 citizens as Casual Day in Lackawanna County. Thank you for the great work that you do every day. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you very much. Come on up.
Thank you.
Pin for each of you, your 2018 pin.
Your 2018 pin?
Yep.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
12, 13, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17.
18-0078 Small Business Spotlight, Commissioner Cummings.
Small Business Spotlight today is Mucculo Family Wines and Natalie Mucculo. Hi, how are you? Can you tell us a little bit about your business?
Well, our business started in 2016. We, I should preface it by saying that my husband and I started the business, but we don't live in the area. We live in the Philadelphia area, but I was born and raised in Old Forge. So we started visiting Old Forge on a regular basis because of some family issues. So we decided that, why not make a commercial winery since we had been making wine for about 10 years, and we were making it on kind of a large scale. In my father's home is a home that was built by my great-grandparents, my maternal great-grandparents, back in 1929, and my great-grandmother ran a store. So we restored that from 90 years ago, and we opened up our tasting room. We do all the production in Old Forge, in the basement of Old Forge, and we do all the tasting upstairs.
Very nice. Where's, where's that at? Why am I not, 1228 South Main Street, Old Forge.
Are you familiar with Augustini's Bakery?
Yes, oh, that end, down the end.
Right next door.
Okay, by Durye.
Yes, on the other end, south of Old Forge.
There you go. Well, thank you so much for, you know, providing another business entity in our, in our county in Old Forge. I appreciate that. And everyone knows the Mucculo name, I just can't ever pronounce it correctly.
You're not alone. You're not alone.
But I appreciate you coming in, and especially since I am from Old Forge as well, I really appreciate the fact that we have such a fabulous family-owned business, and the families from Old Forge, the building is preserved and renovated, which is rare to see today. Usually you see them knocking them down, or they're going up for a sheriff's sale, and they sit there. This is wonderful that you renovated another property in our area and provided another business for us, and I'm greatly appreciative of that, and I, I'm glad that you're here, and thank you so much for coming and being such a great representative of your family and the traditions that we hold.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for having me.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's nothing easy about running your own business.
No.
There's no question about it. I was unaware of the winery. I'm looking very forward to getting there.
Well, we look forward to having you.
I can't wait. I'll see you relatively soon. Thank you.
Terrific, terrific.
Natalie, so here's the picture from the paper. Natalie and her husband. So this was, this was this past Sunday, and we felt that would be a great idea to bring her in because, you know, there's, there's basically like 100-year history with the building itself. And you're talking about your great-grandfather, your grandma, and the fact that like the shelves, the way that it's all set up, the ceiling, nothing has changed. Like it's the same, same look that it had when it was a store, you know, decades and decades ago. You know, I'm sure that your great-grandparents would be very, very happy when they're looking down on you to say that, you know, that their, that their store is open, and it's a blood relative, it's one of their great-grandchildren, and it's, it's a great impact in Old Forge. Okay, let's talk about, so the address is 1228 South Main Street, Old Forge. What's the phone number? Where do they call?
Phone number, area code of course, 570-766-7071.
I'm sure you're on Facebook. What do we have in?
We're on Facebook, Mucculo Family Wines, and thanks to the article, we got a lot of hits, a lot, a lot more likes this past couple of days. And we also have a website, so you can search out Mucculo Family Wines or just Mucc Wines, M-U-C-C. So we do have events. We do Wine and Paint Nights. We have some meetings there as well. So you can find all of the events on Facebook, and you can also find them on the website. We keep that updated.
Yeah, and you're open three days a week. Was it Friday?
Open Thursday through Sunday. So four days, yes.
Thursday through, four days a week.
Yep.
And you're, is it your dad? Your dad's there to greet everybody, to say hello?
Yes.
And how old's dad?
Dad'll be 83 in June. So he's not there every day, because as every 83-year-old should, he still works on weekends. When he comes in on a Thursday, and he's so well-known in town.
Yeah.
And we've gotten to know so many people from coming in, so he's not only seeing people we've known, but we're meeting so many new people. They, I think the article said it perfectly. They come in as strangers and they leave as friends.
Yeah.
So people come in for him, and I keep telling him, "Dad, you're the draw. You're the draw."
Yeah.
And he says, "Okay, I need to be around more." Because you can't buy that kind of, that kind of personalization.
Well, he knows everybody.
He does. He does. So, yeah, you can find him definitely on a Sunday. He definitely comes in on Sundays. Friday, he's usually, you know, making pizza. It's a big pizza night, so you may not see him then. But Thursdays, he'll be around as well, and he's, he's just the life of the party. It's, it's pretty, I'm grateful that I could still have my dad in that kind of shape and being part of the business.
Yeah, really part of the business.
Yeah, and be so moved by all of this, so.
But like, thank you, because you know what? You know, it's great you're keeping Main Street, USA alive. Another storefront is open in Old Forge, and just congratulations on the Mucculo Family Wines and making sure that that storefront is kept open just like your great-grandparents did.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I hope they'd be proud.
Commissioner has a certificate for you?
Certificate of Recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Mucculo Family Wines in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 21st day of March, 2018, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up. I don't want to do this because it's...
Well, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. There you go. One, 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 two, three. Good, thanks.
So nice.
No, I'll be, well, I don't drink, so. Such a pleasure. Thank you.
It's not hard. Definitely. We'll read out the sample of your findings.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can walk down and visit your dad.
Have a virgin Bloody Mary.
There you go.
There you go. Way of commenting, everyone.
18-0079 Goodwood Certificate. The person that we're gonna talk, talk to next has had decades of impact on Lackawanna County, surrounding areas, and has brought so much to his job that he stayed there for 48 years, and most of it was as Executive Director. And his staff loves him. I mean, all of his clients are part of his family, you know, and these are the things that really matter in what our next person does. You have to have involvement in part of the everyday lives of the individuals that Mr. Don Broderick has been dealing with for the last 48 years. This time, I'd like to bring Don Broderick up to the microphone to talk about his.
Thank you so much.
So Don, 1972, you're a bus driver for Robinson Park Day Program.
1972, graduated from University of Scranton, and you start to work at the ARC.
You're on.
Well, it's been quite a career. I really enjoyed it the whole time that, that I have been there. We started out at Allied Services and ended up on Meadow Avenue in the 80s. We had a relatively small program up at Allied. I think we had, it was about $100,000 budget. We had, I think, 10 employees. And we now have 175 employees, we're about a $10 million budget. We, we serve people with intellectual disabilities and autism. We serve about 300 people a week. And we, in 2006, expanded into some of the surrounding counties, so we are now in Lackawanna, Wayne, Susquehanna, Carbon, Monroe, and Pike, which makes us, gives us a very large footprint. Probably one of the largest chapters of the ARC in the, in the country geographically, not, not service-wise. Obviously, the chapters of the ARC in the big cities have a lot more people that they serve. But we do the best we can. We, we have enjoyed a great relationship with the Commissioners and with the, with the state, with our legislators, and we feel that we, you know, are able to provide the day support service residential programs, and most importantly, advocacy work, which we do all the time when people have a need. They call us, and we can connect them to whatever the system is that they would need to do, whether it's education or wills, trusts, all kinds of different issues that come up when you have a person with a disability in your family. So time to move on for me. I have been there for a long time, and really, I have enjoyed it, and it's a little difficult.
Sure it is. 48 years of your life.
Yeah.
Like, not too many people actually have an opportunity to actually do exactly what they love to do for, that's what he did for 48 years, very simple.
Yeah, I, I found my career and, and my lovely wife here, Rose, who most of you know, at a very young age, took over as exec at the bright old age of 27, so.
[laughing]
And, you know, by the seat of one's pants, one learns how to do things, so it's been a great career. I've enjoyed every minute. Thank you for the recognition.
Commissioner Cummings?
Congratulations, and you've lived through many, many changes in, in the medical community in regards to these issues, so.
Absolutely.
You know, there's ups, downs, and frustrations, and I know as a nurse, I've seen a lot of the changes. Sometimes you agree, sometimes you don't, but you survived it all, and that's, that's a testament to you because.
Thank you.
It's a challenging job, and you did a great job, and I'm proud to have you here, and thank you so much, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I know Don Broderick and Rose a very long time, longer than I care to think about too. And they've done, they're an inspiration to the community. The work you've done, the job you've done up there is just unbelievable. My only question is, what are you gonna do next? I'm sure you're not gonna retire.
We, we are busy. We do like to travel, so we're gonna do that a lot. We have, I grew up in, in Maryland. We have a place on the eastern shore of Maryland. My brother, we have a retirement party tomorrow night. My brother is coming up, if he can make it through the 12 inches of snow, so we'll see what happens. And being here for 50 years, I'm almost a local now, so.
You are a local.
Not at all.
See your party tomorrow night, too.
So, yeah, we have lots of things to do. We're quite engaged in community activities and Kiwanis and, and the Eppington Library and St. Gregory's Parish Council, and a lot of things that we get involved in, you know, community-wise, so. And I'm gonna stay somewhat active with the ARC on a part-time basis for a few months anyway.
Don, you said, just, you know, family comes to you, and you're there to help them with the situation that's gone on. Some, the child has autism. You mean, a parent, that's, that's a scary situation.
Absolutely.
And you're able to make it a lighter situation and be able to show them and guide them, and, you know, their children are productive, and they're doing great in our community, and it's all in part because of you. Thank you for everything that you've done for the citizens of Lackawanna County.
Many, many wonderful staff people that we have, so committed to do the right thing. It's really been.
I know a lot of them.
A pleasure for me. Yeah, you do.
But you know what? It starts at the head of it, makes the whole thing happen.
Thank you, sir.
It really does. So you do matter. Certificate of Recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Donald W. Broderick, Executive Director of the ARC of Northeast Pennsylvania, in honor of 48 years of dedicated service, given the 21st day of March, 2018, on behalf of the 214,000 citizens by the Commissioners of Lackawanna County. Would you like to come forward?
Yes, thank you.
[applause] Ross, you gotta come up.
Lifetime celebrity. He's not much without you. Much better looking.
Good, you too. Congratulations.
Thank you. Where do you want the guests?
Her husband.
Richard.
All right, you can go ahead. 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. Perfect. [applause]
Be careful on the steps here. Really careful on the steps.
Thank you.
Chief of Staff, meeting announcement update?
A work session was held on Tuesday, March 13 at 9:30 a.m. in the County Administration Building in the Commissioners' Conference Room with the City of Scranton to discuss the request for Lackawanna County to conduct a property-wide reassessment in Lackawanna County. Present at the meeting were Chairman Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, Vice Chairperson Lorraine Cummings, Chief of Staff Andy Wallace, Chief Solicitor John Brazil, Litigation Solicitor Don Frederickson, Minority Solicitor John Sarah.
Litigation Solicitor Don Frederickson, Minority Solicitor John Sarah. Representing the City of Scranton were Mayor William Courtrite, Council President Pat Rogan, Council Finance Chair Wayne Evans, City Solicitor Jessica Asgra, and Special Consultant on Finances to the City of Scranton Evan Weiss. City Business Administrator of the City of Wolkesboro Ted Wample made a presentation at the meeting on behalf of what an impact on reassessment would have in the City of Wolkesboro. Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody you'd like to say something?
Don't we get to speak now about that?
I'd like to say a few words you can.
I thought that the Commissioners did a good job in, you know, allowing the Scranton City Council, who were all invited a week before, Chief of Staff Wallace, they were the ones that requested the meeting, correct? Is that how that...
That's correct.
And it was announced at their previous week meeting, so any of the council members were welcome to come. And I watched the meeting Monday night before our meeting, and I know Marie Schumacher has, always attends their meetings, and she had asked them if it was going to be a public meeting as well in that, if I'm correct in that. So, anytime that there's officials meeting like that, of course, we don't want to be in violation of the Sunshine Act, so of course, we're going to make it a public meeting. And I'm always the one that's nudging people to request ECTV, who I thank Mark for all the work that you're doing for providing the video and putting it up on YouTube. Some of the comments that were made afterwards, I didn't feel were necessary in the Scranton City Council meeting, and, but it's par for the course with the, specifically two of the council members, seems to be what they do. And, you know, ad hominem and character assassinations are their forte, so I guess we just have to get used to that from them. If that's what the public in the City of Scranton likes, representing their city, then that's their decision, that's who they vote for. I didn't feel it was necessary, and I think I said multiple times throughout the meeting that I would like to make sure that we work together and keep it a civil dialogue during and after the meeting, but they're just not capable of doing that, apparently. And that's a shame, because both of my fellow Commissioners can attest to the fact that after those meetings for reassessment, after I went out into the public, I came back and said, "These are the issues that I'm seeing out in the public. Can we make some changes?" And they did. They worked with me on that. We put all the appeals up online. Our IT department worked with John Foley to make sure that any appeals that came in were put up on our website, and they're kept there in the archive list for anyone to view. We educated, when I went out in those meetings, and I spoke at our last meeting last week, educated the Borough Council members and City Council members in regards to the fact that they have an obligation to keep their tax reassess, their tax assessments in line. That's their responsibility. If they didn't live up to that, then I'm, and they made these, they helped to make the assessments out of sync, that's not the county's fault. They have a fiduciary responsibility to their taxpayers to try and help keep those in line and come to the hearings that we have for the appeals and fight for their taxpayers. An example was given by Mr. Rogan, that he, you know, had a house on the market for three days, and because the assessment was eight hundred and some dollars for all total of the taxes, that sold, that house sold in three days, but yet one that's down the street, on the same street, is at two thousand or whatever the number was, and that's been on the market quite a while, and it's similar but not the same. Well, that can't be your comparable when you don't know the history of both properties. I was hoping that I could find out what property that was, because we don't know if that one that's now paying eight hundred and some dollars a year for all three taxes combined has come in and asked for an appeal on a yearly basis like has been happening throughout the county. Were, you know, is that the case? We don't know. We don't know if there's, you know, bad windows in one and not in the other, or a larger lot, or driveway garage. We don't know that. All we know is that he gave two numbers, and that's disingenuous. That is misleading the public when you give nothing but a sale price or a tax amount without doing the history on it. I mean, we got here because the fact that the tax law is a bad law, first of all, but then to follow the tax law is difficult, and it hasn't been done by the boroughs and townships. And maybe some come in, maybe some don't. But what we're doing now, the other implementation that we had was, we had, we are now collecting the permits throughout the county to make sure that they're handed into the county, because a lot of times, people go out and they add a, an addition to their home, they build a garage, they put siding on, whatever, whatever they're doing, that an assessment would change. But then the borough or the city doesn't hand that permit into the county so that we send our assessors out to reassess that property. That's happened over the years on a continual basis. That was one of the complaints I learned about when I went across the county doing these meetings. Again, I came back, the other Commissioners met, we met together, and in agreement to make sure that we get these permits somehow, and we've done that. We've done that since January, well, actually, maybe December, I think, we started doing that program.
Late December, I think.
Late December?
I think late December.
These are the types of things that we've been trying to work with the boroughs and the cities to help them. We haven't been demanding of them, we haven't been threatening them that if they don't do their job, there would be some kind of repercussions. We're trying to do our job the best we can for the taxpayers to make sure that we aren't doing anything that's going to affect the taxpayers in a tremendous way, and a reassessment absolutely would. And the narrative of the City Council with the name-calling and character assassinations, that's not going to get us anywhere. They need to grow up. Now, either they're going to work with us or they're not. I mean, we went out of our way to have them here. I've gone to their meetings and tried to have a civil discussion with them. I don't think that's too much to ask for, is to have a civil discussion and have a debate that's not ad hominem and characterization hurting the character of someone. I just think that's terrible. But now the public sees what they elected. I hope they change their mind next time around. That's all, I can only hope that they do, because I think what, I just think that that's terrible. I think they're, I mean, we provided them information from Wolkesboro Solicitor, he was a solicitor, correct, the gentleman that came in?
No, business administrator.
Business administrator? And that's accurate information, you know, and I hear, "Well, it's only ten properties." Well, you could pull whatever property you want. They took a whole array of different scenarios that would be looked at, and they did the reass, they did the assessment with the county numbers, for Luzern County numbers, and every single property went up, every single one. So where's the leverage? Most likely, the commercial. The commercial will come down. But they can still, like, this one property that Mr. Rogan talked about being at eight hundred and some dollars for all three taxes, why is it that that wasn't reported or brought to the school district's concern so that they could do a reassessment? They have the ability to do that on a reverse assessment. So why isn't he, he's in real estate, he said he sees this all the time, so why didn't he bring this list of all these properties and go and do the assessment on them then, and bring them to the appeals hearing? Why not? That's their job, that's part of their responsibility to the taxpayer, to keep those in line. And then he said, "Well, the reason that he can't, they can't sell properties is because there was no reassessment done, and that his example proved it." Well, I think it proved us the opposite. The property that had the assessment, the assessment tax and the taxes at eight hundred dollars sold in three days. The one that was at two thousand didn't sell for a while, it's still, it's still on the market. So when all the taxes go up for the City of Scranton in a reassessment, I guess he's going to run into a problem where he's not going to sell any property. He proved, he proved my point. They consistently proved my point for me. So, I, I hope that they change their perspective and their attitudes in their, in the next meeting, that it's more, it doesn't end up where they leave the meeting and then have this, this nastiness. That's all I have, thanks.
Commissioner Notteriani?
I've stated my position on it. I have no further comment on it at this point.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mr. Ted Wample for coming in from Wolkesbury. He does a great job as their business administrator. We were talking to Mr. Wample last year, and actually, coming into this last week. But, you know, we set the meeting up, the mayor wanted us to have a meeting between us and the council and stuff, and we wanted to make sure that there was great decorum. I think everything went really well in the meeting, everybody talked back and forth. I thought we left with the city actually looking into some different information, but then, you know, you get to the council meeting, and I actually talked to Mr. Rogan, I said, you know, "Hey, listen, you know, it's one thing for us to go back and forth, but there's, you know, some of the comments that were made, you know, about the Board of Commissioners here, you know, if we wanted to, we could make comments about the city every single time we have a meeting."
For sure.
We don't do that, because I'm not here to bring the city down, I'm here to build the city up. I mean, we're trying to build the county up. You know, the city is one of forty municipalities that we represent. You know, there's thirty-nine more, you know, and I want to hear what they have to say, and they asked for certain information that they're going to be coming, they're going to supposedly be coming to look for, which we will absolutely give it to them. I mean, our county government's very transparent, and anything that they've asked for or needed, we're there for them. And I just want to throw out a couple of quick things that we have going on in the city. I mean, we could have invested millions of dollars anywhere in Lackawanna County for a central administration building. We picked the city, the center of downtown Scranton, Wyoming Avenue, which has for rent, for sale, for lease signs all over the place. That's going to draw so many people to downtown just because of the different things they have to do for doing their work with county government, and it's going to revitalize Wyoming Avenue, like a lot of us in the audience here, and I'm sure that are watching today, remember. I mean, that one, two-hundred block, there's not a lot going on, but when this building opens this coming, in the next so many months, it's going to be like, the blood flow is going to be back in Wyoming Avenue, and there's a lot going on there. I mean, from the transportation being right in front of the building, and all the other options, you know? And then the other thing, you know, the county took on the land bank. We did not have to take on the land bank. I mean, the city actually could have done it. We took on the land bank. And our first municipality that we started working with was the City of Scranton, because they have the most properties, the most properties. And, you know, at this time, you know, it took us about a year and a half, but this past June, we actually were up and running to start selling properties. We're at forty-nine properties with probably about seven, eight coming in. And what we're doing is, you know, I mean, this is city property. The county tax on those city properties is very small. For the city and school districts, it's larger. So, we're helping them to get properties and homes back on the tax roll, as well as the blight. I mean, if you listen to the City Council, they talk about blight a lot. These fifty properties, we actually are helping to eliminate blight in Lackawanna, down the City of Scranton by making sure these properties are owned. I would just hope, you know, and much, and much, much more. The city does, the county does a lot of different things for the city. And I would just hope that, I mean, that our next meeting, that they get the information, and we're able to sit down, and like I said, we're willing to talk, but there's no need for anybody to be making comments, comments at any meetings about the other governing body, because it's the only people it's destroying is ourselves. And I'm not going to get up here and talk about what's wrong with council, what's wrong with the mayor's office, what's wrong with the city, because I just won't do it. I would hope that they'll take my advice, and they won't either. So hopefully, we'll be having a meeting very soon, and we'll see them then. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Tracy, you'll be recording this, correct? All the minutes, including the public commentary?
Correct. We're recording on ECTV and a recorder, and Tracy's taking...
They'll be in the handwritten minutes.
Tracy takes comprehensive minutes.
Yeah, just want to make sure that that point was made.
Joan Hodawan, it's two twenty Linden Streets, Scranton. With regard to Resolution eighteen dash zero zero six four, approving the county intermediate punishment grant, I downloaded the backup documents, including the plan update for the years two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty, and I found the document very informational. It surprised me. The first section is on training for board and staff, and the second paragraph reads as follows. The Lackawanna County Prison Board membership, which includes you three Commissioners, participates in ongoing training slash education at monthly board meetings. Additionally, board members will participate in specialized training available through their respective departments slash agencies. What training goes on at the board meetings?
We'll answer that under Commissioner's comment.
Okay. Further down, the section called Public Information and Education Programs. The first paragraph reads as follows. Prison board meetings are open to the public and press. A member of the local press is a member of the board, which provides for an open dialogue with local media, resulting in various articles and interviews disseminated to the local community. Who is the member of the local press who sits on the board?
We'll answer it later.
Okay. If no one is currently sitting on the board, do you have a plan for putting a member of the press on the board, and if so, how will you select that press representative? I would like those answers. Next, with regard to Resolution eighteen dash zero zero six eight, entering into a continuum of care agreement, I downloaded that document, and under introduction, the third paragraph reads as follows. United Neighborhood Centers proposes to manage the annual continuum of care review and related work during the period July one, two thousand and seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. I'm confused. Why is this coming forward on March twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen? Why wasn't this introduced a year ago? So I'd like your comments on that. And finally, with regard to Resolution eighteen dash zero zero seven zero, entering into a second lease addendum with ATR properties, I downloaded that document, but I couldn't figure out what was the location of the property in question. I do know it has two elevators.
Wait, what was that? I'm sorry, we were talking, and I didn't hear that.
Okey-dokey. With regard to eighteen dash zero zero seventy, entering into a second lease addendum with ATR properties, I downloaded the document, and I could not figure out the address of the property in question, although it does say the property has two elevators. What is the location of this property?
Oh, the bricks building.
Yeah.
What building?
We'll answer it later.
Okay, so those, I would like those questions answered as you go through the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Marie Schumacher, seventeen ninety-nine East Mountain Road, Scranton. I did not find the time to go through all of the backups, but one that interests me, I would like to know what area is covered by eighteen point zero zero seven two, ratification, ratifying the execution of all documents for the Community Conservation Partnership, which is a bike study narrative for DCED Grand App and a bike study summary for the Grand App. I would like to know what area of the county is covered by this, most especially, I hope it's not restricted to the City of Scranton, because we already have a councilman who is trying to get a person who is widely known for disliking automobiles into the city. So I would like to know that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. 18-0063?
This is the first reading of Ordinance Number 253, establishing the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority. An ordinance signifying the intent of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna to organize and incorporate a municipal authority pursuant to the Municipal Authorities Act of 1945, 53 Pennsylvania Statute 5601, 5623, to be known as the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority, authorizing and directing execution of the Articles of Incorporation in the form herein contained, directing notice of the ordinance to be published, directing that a public hearing be conducted prior to adoption of this ordinance, directing that said articles and proof of such notice be filed with the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, designating the purposes for said authority, appointing the first members of the Board of the Authority, fixing their terms of office, authorizing the taking of all such action as may be necessary and appropriate to organize said authority. Whereas Lackawanna County is a third-class county existing pursuant to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna has determined that it is in the best interest of the citizens of Lackawanna County to create a municipal authority for the purpose of establishing, organizing, financing a permanent annual fair and festivals for recreational purposes within Lackawanna County and securing, developing, and maintaining a permanent fairgrounds within Lackawanna County, including, without limitation, real estate, right-of-way easements, equipment, and related property, both tangible and intangible. Whereas it is necessary for the creation of the same that the Board of Commissioners of the County adopted this ordinance, authorizing and directing the proper officials of the county to prepare, advertise, execute, and file articles of incorporation with the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of the Commonwealth of, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna hereby ordains as follows. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby signifies its intention to organize a municipal authority under provisions of the Municipal Authorities Act of 1945. The name of the proposed authority will be known as the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreational Authority. In pursuance of said intention, the Articles of Incorporation of said authority are hereby approved and adopted in the following manner. To the Secretary of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in compliance with Municipal Authorities Act as amended and supplemented, the County of Lackawanna pursuant to an ordinance duly enacted by the Board of Commissioners authorized and directs the formation of this authority. The name of the authority shall be known as the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority. The name of the incorporating municipality is the County of Lackawanna. The names and addresses of the members of the Board of Commissioners are as follows. Patrick M. O'Malley, Chairman, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County. Jerry Nocerianni, Commissioner, Lackawanna County. Lorraine A. Cummings, Commissioner, Lackawanna County. The names and addresses and terms of the first members of the Board of said authority will be appointed upon final adoption of the ordinance. The terms of the office of the first members of the Board of said authority shall commence on the date of appointment, shall be computed from the first Monday in January of 18. It witness where of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has caused these Articles of Incorporation to be duly executed on behalf of the said county by its fully authorized officers and county seal to be affixed this day. Even though this is a first reading, Solicitor Frederiksen has prepared the ordinance and is prepared to answer any questions and do a further explanation if necessary.
Does the board have any questions?
Just so the board knows, this is the first reading. To set up an authority, the next step is we have to schedule a public hearing. We have to give 30 days' notice and so within the next month, there will be a public hearing. We give an opportunity for the public to come forth and express their thoughts on a fair committee, on a fair authority. After that, it's done. There will be a final adoption of the ordinance. And then that will be forwarded to Harrisburg to actually create the authority.
Thank you.
Does Commissioners have anything? I'd just like to say that I think the inaugural Lackawanna County Heritage Fair is going to be a great opportunity, another great event for Lackawanna County. And please mark the dates, May 20th, June 2nd of 2019. Lots of family fund. It'll be a great opportunity for everybody to get out and enjoy the fair. Resolutions 18-0076.
Approving the current payables for Lackawanna County. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables from Lackawanna County General Fund. Numbers 259, 492 through 260, 216 inclusive, totaling $7,535,265.14. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $5,333,269.2. And our county comptroller, Gary DeBilio, is here if there are any questions.
Gary, do you have to part?
Yes, Commissioners, all the invoices on today's agenda are in order. I would like to mention something regarding some legal fees that have been talked about recently. There are invoices for legal work involving the ongoing prison investigation. In today's bill list, the total paid so far is approximately $260,000. And we're aware of another $40,000 which we haven't received yet. But a couple of things I just wanted to mention. Our comptroller's office receives general summary invoices and not billing detail on those bills, which may involve client confidentiality. Prior to our office receiving those bills, they are reviewed and approved in detail by the County General Counsel for litigation. And I can tell you that the county is being billed for mainly partner lawyer rates per hour, generally $375 to $400 per hour. There is one law firm of the three, Myers, Breyer, and Kelly, that is billing for partner hours of $375, associate hours of $275, and some legal assistant work for just $125. And if some of the other firms could do something like that, it may save some money. I'm not sure if they're able to or not. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes. 18-0057?
Yeah, this is authorizing a reimbursement resolution. And for the record, this resolution was tabled at the last Board of Commissioners meeting due to a few questions. Authorizing reimbursement resolution, whereas the County of Lackawanna intends to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds to finance various projects, which include, among other things, acquisition and renovation to a property at 1360 Wyoming Avenue in Scranton, Pennsylvania. Whereas said acquisition repairs or capital improvements to the project are expected to commence prior to the issuance of the bonds, the county desires in it to advance certain of the costs of the project from the General Fund of Lackawanna County, which do not constitute proceeds of tax-exempt bonds or notes. Whereas the county, in compliance with Section 1.150-2 of the United States Treasury Regulation, reasonably expects to reimburse itself for expenditures made for it by said project with proceeds of the bonds, now therefore be resolved by the County of Lackawanna in lawful session duly assembled as follows. One, the county reasonably expects to reimburse original expenditures for the project to be paid by the county from its general funds with proceeds of the bonds. Two, there is a declaration of official intent intended to comply with the requirements of Section 1.150-2E of the United States Treasury Regulations. Three, this resolution shall become effective immediately. Four, proper officers of this county are authorized and directed to do such things as may be necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of this resolution. Five, in the event, any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this resolution shall be held invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect or impair any remaining provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this resolution, it being the intent of Lackawanna County that such remainder shall be and shall remain in full force and effect. Mr. Thomas Durkin, our chief financial officer, is here if there are any questions. And I believe Mr. Frederiksen drew up the resolution? No, Mr. Durkin did in context with the other solicitor.
Mr. Durkin, this is very similar to what we have at the Globe. Same thing, basically.
Yeah, Commissioners, what this is, is just a resolution that we need to have in place. We don't know how we're going to fund the building on Wyoming Avenue. It may be a bank borrowing. It may be a bond issue. If it's a bond issue, in order to reimburse ourselves for any expenditures that we make on that building prior to getting the bond issue done, we have to have this resolution in place. So it's just kind of a precautionary resolution to get it in place so that if we spend money, we will be able to reimburse ourselves out of the bond when we issue the bond.
Does the board have any questions? Okay, thanks, Tom. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the reimbursement resolution. Do I have a second? Roll call. Yes.
I'm going to say no because I don't agree with the project. I'm assuming it's, this is going to authorize the money to be spent, correct?
That would be part of the project at Wyoming Avenue. Commissioner, that is correct. There will be other items involved there.
Thanks.
This is not obligating us to borrow the money. It just gives us a vehicle to reimburse ourselves if in fact we do.
That's correct. This has nothing to do with
Borrowing money.
A bond issue or how we're going to borrow or what we're going to borrow. It's only a resolution that allows us to reimburse ourselves under the circumstances that we do a bond issue to fund this project. That's all this does, is it just allows the county to pay the general fund back if the general fund pays money before we have the bond in place.
This isn't the payment to them as well? I thought we were voting on the payment to them for-
That's not what this resolution is, Commissioners. This resolution is only to put a resolution in place that allows us to reimburse ourselves if we do a bond issue. Under the law, if we do a bond issue without having a resolution in place and we expended money as a down payment or if we pay an architect to do some drawings or something for the building, we wouldn't be able to reimburse ourselves out of the bond issue unless we have this resolution in place.
So where are we getting the money from to pay when we put this $25,000 or whatever it is down? General fund?
Theoretically, we can expend that money either from the general fund or the capital fund, wherever the funds are available, to pay the down payment. And again, wherever we pay it from, having this resolution in place, if we do a bond issue, allows us to reimburse ourselves.
So this is just to get the money back, just to allow us to get the money back? Okay, all right, I'll vote for it then. Okay, yes, sorry. I apologize.
Okay. And I'm, yes, too.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You got the roll call? Okay. Thanks, Tom.
Can I just do that and change my vote or do I have to do something?
Uh, yeah, she's changing. 18-0064?
Approving a county intermediate punishment grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant, application submitted by the Lackawanna County Treatment Force for the County Intermediate Punishment Treatment Program. And we have with us today the new Director of the Lackawanna County Treatment Court, Mary Lou Loftus, to answer any questions on this.
Good morning, Mary Lou.
Thank you very much for having me here. I am here seeking your approval for the intermediate punishment grant. It is through the Pennsylvania Crime Commission on Crime and Delinquency. It's the main funding for our treatment court programs, for drug court, DUI court, all of our courts. The grant pays for personnel. It helps to supplement to salaries and their benefits. It also pays for overtime. I know that that's a big part of our budget is overtime. It helps to pay for supplies for the drug testing and for alcohol monitoring. And it also helps for consultants so that we can help pay for outpatient, for inpatient, any kind of transitional housing, any kind of extra help that our clients might need kind of comes out of that consultant's also, and transportation.
This is, well, the same as last year.
Exactly, exactly. Every two years. This is a grant that runs every two years. Yep.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
Well, yeah, now that Joan had read, yeah, I would like to know. This is, this is a separate-
Commissioner, yeah, I took a look at it. There's a little misnomer, again, thrown around with terminology here. They're referring to, it's actually the Lackawanna County Criminal Justice and Human Services Advisory Board, which they are referring to as the prison board. It is not what we refer to as the prison board, which is actually, under the prison code, the Board of Managers, but we call the prison board that runs the prison. This is not that board. This is a board that is made up of the county commissioners, the director of Lackawanna County Human Services, a judge, district attorney, court administrator, director of Lackawanna Susquehanna Division of Alcohol and Drug Abuse, county chief of staff, the warden. There's about 10 other people on this board. And it runs or manages the drug treatment court is what it does. So it's not actually the prison board that runs the, that we call the prison board or the Board of Managers. So it's a different entity.
So who is the media that sits on their board, do you know?
I apologize. You do not know.
Well, she's new. George would be able to help her with that.
I can look into it and I can find out. I know I'm new to the position.
Yeah, I know you're new. That's fine. And when do they hold these meetings? Because... Do you go to those meetings?
We do get, we do get notice of meetings. I believe they're done quarterly, sometimes twice a year if I'm not mistaken. And I, not everybody attends them, but they, we do get some kind of a notice from you when you're holding one of these meetings. We used to get them from Barb Durkin if I'm not mistaken. I don't believe you've held one since you're there yet, Mary Lou, right?
Correct.
So when you do hold one, please make certain I get it and I will float it to the county commissioners and all the other officials and make them aware of the meeting. Or perhaps it may even be an annual meeting. I'm not certain on that. You'd have to check that. But I did see, I do recall seeing one at one time.
Okay, I can get that information and I will send it over to you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Any other questions? I'd like to make a motion approving county intermediate punishment grant. Do I have a second? Roll call. Yes. Yes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much.
18-0065?
This is a contract amendment. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County. Is hereby entered to a contract amendment for special services on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging with Howard MacIntosh for a period from July 1, 2017 through June 30 of 2020. And our Director of Aging Services, Mr. Kavulich, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning, Mr. Kavulich. How are you?
Good. Good morning, Commissioners. This is, this is two bits of good news. One, we anticipated reaching only a smaller population of older adults with this program than we actually did. We increased at least by 25% more than we thought we were going to reach. This program reaches older adults and high rises in the housing community for rent rebates. It also goes out and helps individuals that are applying for a Pennsylvania waiver program for older adults. So they, this, Howard will go out and helps individuals complete their Pennsylvania 600 application and get it into the state so that they can get the services that they need. So we've reached more individuals than anticipated. It's a slight increase to what we initially had proposed. So it's $2,500 and we also have the money in our budget to make the adjustment without any problems.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kavulich? I'd like to make a motion entering into a contract amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
18-0066?
Approving a contract for Office of Youth and Family Services Training Service. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Office of Youth and Family Services Contract for Training Services with the Philadelphia Child and Family Therapy Training Center. We have the Deputy Director of the Office of Youth and Family Services, Carrie Browning, here to explain the agreement.
Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. This is a didactic training for 41 of our staff in the family home-based model. This is currently used by our FIT team on some of our most difficult abuse and neglect cases. So our staff would also be trained in this model. cases, so our staff would also be trained in this model.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion approving a contract for OYFS Training Services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes. 18-0067.
Entering into a mutual cooperation and coordination agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a mutual cooperation and coordination agreement on behalf of the Department of Health and Human Services and Geisinger Health Plant to furnish medical assistance coverage services to recipients. And Carrie Browning, again, will explain this agreement.
This is a pre-existing agreement for information sharing only on mutual clients between Geisinger and our office, and it's for planning for medical and behavioral health care in abuse and neglect cases.
Does the Board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a mutual cooperation and coordination agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 18-0068.
A continuum of care agreement, be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a continuum of care agreement on behalf of Department of Human Services with United Neighborhood Centers. And Carrie, again, will explain the agreement.
The county is responsible to participate in a federal housing initiative based on the HUD guidelines. So by participating in the continuum of care, this assists with all housing initiatives in Lackawanna County.
Does the Board have any questions?
Well, just the...
The billing cycle, sure. So the HUD fiscal cycle is generally a year behind our fiscal cycle. I'm sure there are many contributing factors in that, but that's from the federal government.
That was part of Joan's questions, wasn't it?
Yes, that's what it was.
Okay, Joan, did she hear that?
I wanted to know why this didn't come up a year ago.
Right, this is, we're just getting this now from the federal government.
Just getting the money.
It's just them, yeah. They're behind.
They're behind.
They're your behind.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Carrie.
Like to make, okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into the continuum of a care agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 18-0069.
This is the formal approval of a union agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a memorandum of an agreement by and between County of Lackawanna and the service employees, international union, AFL-CIO Local 668, to commence on January 1st, 2017, and expire on December 31st, 2020. And Mr. Justin McGregor, our Director of Human Resources and Chief Negotiator for the county, on behalf of the commissioners on this agreement, is here to answer any questions and briefly explain the agreement to us and what it entails.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Justin.
This is an agreement between SEIU 668, which is our largest union. The agreement is four years, 2017 through 2020, and it goes retro back to 17 as we've negotiated throughout that time period. The wage increases are 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 2, and there are no changes to health care. As part of the agreement, aging was also negotiated, and aging care managers will receive 2% over the life of the contract, and all other employees, including the clerical, will receive 3%. You know, this is a reasonable and fair agreement that we all worked hard on. You know, I know the membership worked hard, it was respectful. Could be tough at times, but I'd like everyone to know that, you know, we respect these members, they protect our elderly, they keep our justice system running, they answer the phones at the 911 center, and maintain the quality of life in all of our buildings. So we think, again, that this is a fair agreement.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. McGregor?
Yeah, what are the changes, Jason?
In regard to the wage increases, Commissioner?
Yeah.
So the main body of the membership will receive 2 and 1/2, 2 and 1/2, 2 and 2. And then in aging, the aging care manager 3s will receive 2%, and all other employees will receive 2%.
So it's Area Agency on Aging, clerical, case managers, RNs, and fiscal. What does fiscal mean?
Uh, the...
Oh, sorry, is that just fiscal wages? Is that per department?
I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Is that the department that's listed on the top there?
Um, aging.
Aging, clerical, case managers, RNs, and fiscal, is that just in our Area Agency?
Yeah, they're all within the aging department, those positions.
I know there's some concerns on this. Are we going to have a copy of this on the internet for the public to read?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
When, is that up there now, or will they have it?
If you vote to approve this today, we'll get it up today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does the Board have any other questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a memorandum of agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Justin. 18-0070.
This is entering into a second lease addendum with ATR Properties, I am here to... I take the latitude of reading the address into this agreement that it, that we are leasing, it is not included in the resolution. I checked with our solicitor, he said I could add that in.
So Joan can hear the address, okay.
When I was preparing this resolution, because it was an addendum to a current lease and the address was in it and was not attached to it, the address was not, I should have picked it up. It was a good pick-up by Joan that it was not in it, and I'd like to correct myself right now and add the address into it if it's okay with the Board of Commissioners.
Sure, so Joan will have the information.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a second lease addendum with ATR Properties LLC to extend the term of the lease, otherwise known as the Bricks Building, 130 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Of the lease, term of the lease being December 31st through 2027, with rent remaining at $11.25 per square foot. And on January 1st, 2023, the rent will be increased to $12 per square foot. This lease was negotiated by Kevin Shaughnessy, our Director of Building and Grounds, along with Attorney Don Fredrickson, our Solicitor for Litigation. I'd like Mr. Shaughnessy to come forward and explain this lease to it and how it's going to benefit Lackawanna County, especially the savings we're going to have as a result of it.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Shaughnessy.
So, yeah, we're going to extend the lease with ATR Properties, and in that lease agreement, you will see that this will eliminate our, the owner of ATR Properties is going to take over the maintenance, and that include all the supplies, the maintenance, I have two maintenance people that work there, the snow removal, ice removal, the exterior of the building, the structure, the light bulbs, the ballast, you know, which comes out to about $50,000 a year. And along with the, you know, this property alone, over the 10-year lease, will save the county, just, you know, in this property, over $1 million over the 10 years.
And it frees up maintenance people for other buildings.
Yeah, in other words, we're not going to lay anybody off. These guys are going to be, we'll absorb them in other properties, yes.
And the materials that would cost us yearly thousands of dollars.
Oh, $40,000, $50,000 a year. I have the exact math downstairs, but we have it out to about 100, 100, between 100 and 120,000 dollars a year. So over that 10 years, you're well over $1 million in savings.
Does the Board have, does the Board have any questions?
No, I just have some comments. This building, we did, the owner did a lot of renovations for us that I had requested, and I greatly appreciate the work that he did on that. And I understand the elevator's going to be working now?
Yes, we worked that right into the lease agreement where he will have both elevators operational, where he only had one.
Right. And that's not going to be our responsibility then?
No. Commissioner, two things that we worked into the lease that Kevin was concerned about was, one, that both elevators have to be up and running at all times, and, two, on the dime of the owner of the building, not the county.
Right.
And additionally, he has to have daily maintenance staff in the building to make sure it's being cleaned and maintained appropriately. And he's also agreed to repaint the building every, what is it, every so many years he's going to...
Every three years.
Every three years, he's going to repaint the entire interior of the building to make sure it stays up to code and up to standards.
I appreciate the fact that, you know, we did a tour and I had some issues and it was immediately taken care of, so...
And the other issue with that building is it's a building we want to keep under lease because it houses adult probation, which is an office we do not want to bring into the other county administration building once we complete the new building.
Correct. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make motions entering into a second lease addendum with ATR Projects. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. 18-0071.
This is a license agreement with the city of Scranton. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a license agreement with the city of Scranton for the use of utility poles owned by the city for the purpose of hanging fiber optic communication lines for the new Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe store. And Gary Cavill, the county engineer from GPI, is here to explain the agreement to us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Carrie, how are you?
Good. This is a lease agreement for 99 years to ensure that the work that we're doing, we're replacing three poles, and then the city of Scranton is renovating five poles for our fiber lines that are going to run, basically, I believe, from Jefferson down to the new Globe building, that we don't get charged in the future for the use of those poles. It was worked out by our county solicitor and the city of Scranton solicitor. I've reviewed it, and it seems fair.
Okay. Does the Board have, does the Board have any questions for Mr. Cavill?
And Commissioners, just to let you know, this here is a, there's no expiration on this lease. It goes basically as long as we're using the poles, and there's no cost to the city, or to the county, the city's not charging any rent or anything else to lease these. So it's a benefit to the county to be able to use these poles at no cost. Okay, because utilities would have charged us, you know, PP and O them would have charged us to put our lines on their poles, but the city's letting us do it for nothing, so, okay.
Nice. Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into a license agreement with the city of Scranton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Carroll?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Carrie. 18-0072.
This is ratifying the execution of all documents for the Community Conservation Partnership Program, ratifying the execution of all documents for the Program of Conservation on Greenways, Trails, Recreation Programs with the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for Bicycle Study. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting public interest in economic development projects, whereas Lackawanna County supports local efforts that improve the quality of life by improving access to reliable, safe, and affordable multimodal transportation, including bicycles. Whereas Lackawanna County in partnership with Luzerne County obtained funding via a Community Conservation Program C2P2 grant with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources to undertake this bicycle study. Whereas Lackawanna County in partnership with Luzerne County obtained funding via Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program also to undertake additional study. Now therefore, be it resolved, this 21st day of March 2018, that Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents executing the grant Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Program. And Mr. George Kelly, our Director of Economic Development, is here to answer any questions and explain the agreement to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you, George.
Good morning, George, how are you?
Good morning, George.
Commissioner's wonderful. This is a bike study grant that is limited to the city of Scranton and the city of Wilkes-Barre. It will go all the way out to Marywood University and concentrate more of the downtown. It'll go over to the ION District as well, up to Geisinger, up north by Nyack Park. We applied for a grant, we were awarded $54,400 to share between Wilkes-Barre and Scranton. We have to come up with $4,080 as our match. Luzerne County will also be coming up with $4,080. This is the first grant that we're looking at, the DCED grant that we're looking to ratify today to submit that. We are still waiting on the DCNR contract to arrive. It should have been here prior to this meeting. So we may want to just strike the DCNR grant, and I'd be glad to come back when that grant comes our hands. So we'll just focus on the DCED grant that we just described.
Okay, does the Board have any question?
Recently, it's been in the paper about some type of conspiracy that I'm being blamed for. Do you want me to bring this up now, or you want me to bring it up later? Might as well bring it up now, we're talking about it. Are you now or ever, or are you ever been a supporter of the bicyclist agenda? Cummings sees new conspiracy? Not sure. Did I ever talk about a conspiracy? Jeff? Did that word ever come out of my mouth? Because I don't remember ever saying, "There's a conspiracy with the government." Did I ever say that to you?
It was my place to speak. The word you used, I believe, was agenda.
Correct, I said there was, environmentalists had an agenda because they don't like the pollution from the cars. It's not a conspiracy, it's a fact. And there's no conspiracy that I'm talking about, and to the general public... I've never said the word conspiracy. I said agenda here. I'm talking about, I have an agenda myself. My agenda is to keep people's taxes low and to make sure that there's transparency in government, and to make sure that I'm looking in every way I can to cut spending. And that's why I have a problem with this ordinance and this resolution. Because I think that there are more, better ways to spend our tax dollars, period. To the viewing audience, I want to be perfectly clear. My concern with this bike study has absolutely nothing to do with a conspiracy. That's some word that a newspaper used, not my words, it was theirs. I did not state that to anyone. If you choose to believe the things that are written in the paper about things like that, then I'm not sure what to say to you. What it has to do with is wasteful spending of your money and misplaced priorities. We have $14 million of roads and bridges, bridge repairs that are needed in Lackawanna County alone. $14 million. Across the state, there are millions, if not billions of dollars, of roads and bridge repairs. But what is the state taking money out of your paycheck? It's your money to pay for. Bike lane studies. We have potholes that cause millions of dollars worth of damage to multiple vehicles across the state and country, but yet we are worried about a bike lane. We're told that bike lanes are required for your health and safety. Well, roads were put in place specifically for vehicles, not bicycles. Not only is the local and state and federal government money being wasted prior to our priorities being met on these bike studies across the state, but then we here in NEPA are also utilizing LSA funds, better known to the public as casino money, for many of these Rails-to-Trails projects as well. Casino money that was originally intended and passed by the public on a ballot referendum to help lower our property taxes. They were never meant to be used for anything other than that, and this is just egregious misuse of taxpayer dollars, as far as I'm concerned. My words were that the government shouldn't spend money on trying to meet anybody's specific agenda. If they want to pass something, they should run for office and present it as a change that they want to implement. Every elected official has an agenda. I told you mine. Cut spending, lower taxes, be transparent, period. That's not an issue, that shouldn't be a problem, but to call an agenda a conspiracy is just a little over the top, and I just believe that that's not necessary to try and change or interpret somebody's words as such a word. I just don't. Now, on this specific bill, I've spoken to you numerous times about this, is there, you're Is there, you're telling me that we will not get funding if we don't provide this? Explain that portion of what you had emailed to me.
What we have is, as the planning organization for PENDOT, as part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is a partnership between Luzerne and Lockawanna County, we are required by, by the funding sources, which would be the federal government and the state government, to have a plan for alternative transportation. It's a requirement, and it must be part of our planning. So, if we want to qualify, and we want to continue receiving the federal benefits, as well as the state benefits, we need to have a plan that addresses it. And that would be bicycles, walking, transportation systems, how we meet the needs of those without cars. So, bicycles is considered an integral part of alternative transportation, and that is why we're looking to use this as part of our addressing of alternative transportations to meet the needs of those who do not have cars.
Is an ADA curb, curbs, whatever the word, what is the curb set?
Curb cuts, ADA.
Curb cut, thank you. Aren't they also considered a part of that program? And trails are considered a part of their program?
ADA curb cuts.
I mean, I have it in front of me, so.
We usually do ADA curb cuts through our Community Development Block Grant Program to remove fiscal barriers for those with disabilities, but PENDOT does fund those type projects, too.
Right. So, PENDOT does fund them.
Yes. Now, the gambling grants, that is not a PENDOT initiative. That is initiative.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, this is the taxpayers' money regardless of where it's coming from. And all this is, this isn't just printed. This is money coming from the taxpayers, whether it's coming from the casino money, whether it's coming from their tax on their gas, or whether it's coming from the lottery, or whether it's coming from our paychecks. It's still taxpayer money.
Yes, it is.
And it's budgeted by the governor to go to specific places, and the legislature agrees to it, but, you know, they have their legislative fights back and forth deciding on where the money's going to go. But it's still taxpayers' dollars. So, I spoke with Mr. Cavill, who's here as well, because he does a lot of work in this area, and, you know, I understand you're saying that the money is required, we have to have a plan in place, but that plan doesn't have to include the bike study, correct?
Bicycle is one form of alternative transportation.
And so is a wheelchair, and so is, what else is considered an alternative form of transportation?
Walking.
Walking. Yes, that's right. We're considering machines in one of the videos. You know, I mean, we spent, I have the report here, grand total, they look at this and they say, "Oh, it's only this much money," or "It's only that much money." We just, you know, we just had a possible ordinance come through for a $5 registration fee. And, I mean, I've been opposed to that for a while, and it didn't come up again, obviously for good reason. But yet, this is not a problem, to spend money on a study for a bike lane. And I just think that's, that's, that's an issue for me. And then also, in this study that you gave me from the MPO, grants in our state, you know, it's not just $100,000. It's $5 million that have been awarded to nine bicycle and pedestrian projects through just 2016 and '17 state fiscal year from the Multimodal Transportation Fund Program. That's your money. We have $14 million worth of roads and bridges that need to be repaired in our county alone. $5 million of state money is going to bike, bike and pedestrian projects through 2016 and '17.
Commissioner, can I reference the $5 registration fee? An ordinance was read there for $5 for registrations on, on cars. If they opted to do a two-year registration, that would be $250 per registered vehicle. That would have raised $900,000 for the county, which would have been matched dollar for dollar by the government to give us $1.8 million to fix our roads here in Lockawanna County.
But George, I understand you're trying to say it's something that you are in favor of, but what I'm trying to tell you is it's a new tax, and people don't want any more taxes. And, 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 you know, they want us to have a fiduciary responsibility in what we're spending of their money. And I just, that's my complaint. I'm trying to make sure that the money is being spent on something that's actually required, and our priorities are set in specific areas. It's interesting to me that this is one of the editorial caption contests this past week. I mean, this is what we're dealing with in Northeast Pennsylvania. They've recognized it in the same exact paper where they have this, where they're making fun of me because I'm complaining about wasting money on a bike study program. That's not your fault, George. I'm just looking at you because you're the speaker, so don't please take that personally.
No problem.
So, I don't know. Here, to the public, which is it? Do they, do they want us to fix the potholes, or do they want us to have the bike studies and make fun of this commissioner because I'm not in favor of it? If you could figure it out, you're a better person than me. As for me, I'm sorry, I can't support these kind of programs, and it has nothing to do with any kind of conspiracy. It has everything to do with the fact that I think we have better things to spend our money on right now, and if after all of that is fixed, we want to do bike lanes, so be it. I have nothing against bicycles. That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion ratifying the execution of documents for Community Conservation Partnership Program. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Eighteen dash zero zero seven three.
This is in agreement with the Northeastern Pennsylvania Industrial Resource Center. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with the Northeastern Pennsylvania Industrial Resource Center, known as NEPERC, ending, enabling provision of services promoting awareness of careers in the manufacturing industry sector under a Lockawanna County Workforce Development Board Business Education Partnership Grant. And Mr. George Kelly is here also to explain this agreement to us. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you, Chief. This is a grant that's awarded to our Industrial Resource Center in Northeast Pennsylvania. They are going out to 20 schools, and they're doing a video conference where the school students actually go onto manufacturing organizations and take videos to shadow learn more about manufacturing and to give some insight to other students. They have a contest among their schools and the public to vote on that to have the best video. So, this grant is, there's five schools right now in Lockawanna County that NEPERC is working with to have these videos as part of the video contest. If this one's successful, what we're looking to do is to participate next year in just a contest in all of Lockawanna County schools if they will not participate. So, this one is for $11,400, for the one that's currently underway, and I think the voting is going on now.
So, next year would be for all the districts?
Yes.
If it's close, right. Okay. Okay, any questions for George? I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement with Northeast Pennsylvania Industrial Resource Center. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, George. Eighteen dash zero zero seven four.
I'm going to read this, and there's also a typo on this. This should be known as the Lockawanna Fantastic Celebration. We, this should be corrected in the resolution. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County does hereby enter into a performance agreement with Northern Appalachian Wind Symphony for the Lockawanna Fantastic Spectacular on July 3, 2018, for a cost not to exceed $14,742.50.
Andy, we never discussed that name change, so I just want to make a note of that, that I wasn't aware of that.
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. Because we have other partners in the project, so we probably want to discuss it with them. But I would support that, just thanks for updating me. This is exciting. We have a new partner in the July 3, which was formerly, I guess, called Scrantastic Spectacular. So, it's the Northern Appalachian Wind Symphony. They've been around three years. If you'd like to Google them, they have a great website, and you can see some samples of their music. So, we're really excited about this partnership. So, this is an agreement to work with them for the July 3 concert.
I think.
Okay. Does the board have any questions?
No, I just tend to agree with what Maureen was saying. We're talking about, I just want to get the name of this right. That was the Lockawanna County, not the Scranton, correct?
That's what we, when we had our.
I just wasn't made aware of that, so I'm being put a little bit on the spot.
I'm sorry, Maureen. I thought you were.
And again, in our community, that's okay.
I thought that, well, you were, I believe you were either on the phone, or you played the.
Just to give some background, it was not favoring Scranton. It's just, it's been in existence six years. We have other partners. I'd like to at least let them know.
Completely understood. Completely, yeah.
What's.
Our effort was just to promote Lockawanna County.
No, I totally get it.
Not to take anything away from.
Right, right. I'm just, I'm just very sensitive in these community partnerships to that, so. Of course, Lockawanna County is a tremendous supporter, and we should be recognized for all of the work we do.
We put all the money in it, right?
No, we don't put all the money in it. We have other partners who contribute. This year, we are putting more because we have lost some of our sponsorships, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into a performance agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is, next page. Eighteen dash zero zero seven five, awarding an Arts and Culture Grant.
Yeah. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought you did, yeah.
We need to vote on it. Yeah.
It was 74.
Seventy-four? I'm sorry.
I thought you did.
Okay.
My fault.
Entering into a performance agreement.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay. Eighteen dash zero zero seven five.
Awarding of Arts and Culture Grants. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County does hereby award the Arts and Culture Mini Grant to the following community organizations. South Abington Township, $500 for the annual Shakespeare in the Park Summer Program. Troup Borough, $500 for the annual Night Out Crime and Drug Prevention Program. And our Director of Arts and Culture, Maureen McQuig, is here to explain these mini grants to us.
This is just our ongoing mini municipal grant program to make sure we get money out into other parts of the county. So, these two projects qualified for music at the, and entertainment at the Night Out on August 5 for Troup, and the South Abington will be working with the Ghostlight for a free Shakespeare in the Park in June.
Okay. Any questions for Maureen? Like to make a motion awarding an Arts and Culture Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
Eighteen dash zero zero eight zero.
These are appointments to the Lockawanna County Regional Planning Commission. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lockawanna County Regional Planning Commission. Jermaine Carey, Clarkstown, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2020. Be it further resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawanna County hereby appoints the following individual to the Lockawanna County Planning Commission. Cindy Campbell, Peckville, Pennsylvania, term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2018. And Mr. Kelly is here. If there are any questions on these appointments, they are required by law.
Mr. Kelly?
Commissioner, just a little background on the Regional Planning Commission. It's a commission that reviews subdivisions, any type of development plans. They meet on a monthly basis. We review plans, and the local municipalities review plans. So, it's consultative. It's a duty that we're required to do as a county. We have a great working relationship, and we do a lot of educational opportunities or educational events to help municipalities in their prop, in their projects.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion, appointments to Lockawanna County Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Bowles, Scranton. First thing I'd like to discuss is, when we brought up the issue about PTSD for our vets and our other people, especially with the mental health, had brought that clinical psychologist that had written many books, Brain on Fire, and we brought him here, Pat. I'd like to know where we are with that, if we're anywhere, in getting a study, a grant or something with the, you know, the college and everybody else in here with the brain mapping and all, to go ahead and move forward with something. Every day, we're losing lives, and it's critical. So, I don't know where it's at right now.
We'll answer to Commissioner's comment.
We'll answer to our Commissioner's comment.
Okay. The next thing, some of the sidewalks out here at Adams Avenue are all deteriorating and falling apart. They could use some patching. On the mall downtown Scranton, and this was a big issue between Scranton City Council and myself. I've been asking where were the parking spaces we were supposed to have and all. 500 spaces now. Well, bottom line came down, we don't have 500 parking spaces. Money was used from a bond that the city had floated. That money went to the parking people. They in turn gave Vassili, almost $5 million for the mall, toward allocating 500 parking spaces for them, so they didn't have a price war going on between the mall having spaces and them having the others, so they could kind of control the parking in the city. So, we never had 500 spaces. But still money the city will never get to use, and the city had already given up over a million and a half dollars a year in revenue that they were making on the malls. But my main issue with this is, since you got the mall pretty much for free, somebody else paid for it, he's only assessed at $3.8 million on the mall. And I'm asking that it be reassessed. We need that money in the city of Scranton to pay our taxes or reduce our tax burden, and if we increase the tax base, we're going to decrease the tax rate. The school boards murdered us in the city. The city itself is killing us with it, and we have people here that should be reassessed. I have the church I bought that they were going to tear down, the Holy Cross Church. I bought it to preserve our culture. The city was buying it for a dollar, and then just ripping it down. A local judge was buying the mall, or the hall next door for $2. He already had a deed executed, but it was laying in his drawer when they decided to sell me everything. And I paid $35,000. I owe $50,000 on that property right now in back taxes. They assessed it at a half a million bucks. Yet it had a zero assessment before. I never asked them to reassess it, but they went out and assessed it at a half a million bucks because I didn't play Palladiums in the city of Scranton. So, those are issues that need to be looked at. In fact, I'm going to ask the Attorney General's Office to start really looking into this issue because it's just wrong. But there's somebody down there, and we're not doing a darn thing about getting extra money, and that's on all the nonprofits. They should have a fee put on them. They should contribute, not a little donation here or there, but they should contribute to the city of Scranton and to the county. They're getting free police, basically. They're getting fire protection, and we're the ones supporting them, yet we're getting zero in return, just because, oh, some of their students go to a store and they buy this and that. The people that own the store don't take me on vacation or anybody here. You know, they take their own money and their own profits. That's why they're in business. You know, the council, and, believe me, I've been with them. I had a go around with them the other night with Gahan regarding the parking garage, about him sending letters and then lying to me that he had sent the letter when I showed him that it was sent two days after I talked to him, when he said it was sent before. And it was totally oblivious to the parking spaces. These are the people who are handling millions and millions of dollars, yet he was totally, totally clueless what the arrangement with the parking garage was, that we didn't have free parking there. We didn't have 500 spaces. And I can understand your frustration, what's going on. You know, we all have to come together in this county. Does everybody have the right answer? I doubt it, because this whole county, the city and all, is beating the people up for years and years and years, and now when somebody tries to change, I guess, the way the train goes through the house, it's not what we want. They want business as usual, and that's the sad part of this. And for you to be criticized that you're a conspirator is an absurdity, and the idiot that printed that should be fired. That's my own opinion. They write about me. They wrote about my Russian connections, and I brought them the desserts from Russia and coffee. I mean, you know, how many Russians live in Scranton, for God's sakes? There are immigrants that came here. They're the ones who built this community. And you got the nerve to knock them? Knock their pastry? It's delicious. Say you didn't like it, their coffee? You know, this is the stupidity that we have to put up with. And, you know, there's a key word that needs to be used in this county and in the city. It's called common sense. And that's what's lacking. You guys are trying to make something happen and they need to implement. They have to learn the word priority first. Do you want to hit a pothole or do you want to ride your bicycle? Or do you want to walk somewhere? What's our priority? Do we want to fix streetlights? How about new signs in the city so you know where the heck you're going? Then you can see a city street and say, oh, this is where I'm supposed to be. So, there are a lot of things that need to be addressed. But you guys are trying to do your job and build the county and grow it. And if we need to do a reassessment or we need to do that, I've been to the board, I'm in court over the cases. We went in, they said, no, we're not going to do it. So, you wind up in court. Thousands and thousands of dollars are being spent, which I brought up the last time I was here about the one issue we had. The tax collector, Kolodzewski, uh, and your solicitor filed a personal lien on me rather than put it against the property. And that was brought up here and you said, no way we're going to do that. Yet they went ahead and did it and I'm fighting it in court. Again, I'm spending thousands, the county's spending thousands. And there's no common sense. So, it's going to get done down the road because one thing I'm not going to be is bullied by anybody in this county or in the city. I'm born and raised here. If you take what our family has done, almost a hundred years of business here, and I'm in the fifty-six, the millions and millions of dollars we've put into this county in payroll and everything else, you know, speaks who we are. And then we're being criticized by those that contribute zero. But they run off at the mouth and they run off at this. They're takers, they're not givers. And that's the most important thing here. Everybody in this community has to learn to give something up and be part of the community to make this community grow. And they're not doing that. They all want self-serving deals, nice, easy cushion jobs, contribute nothing and take from everybody else. And the criticism put on you, uh, just goes beyond to do what you, Pat, Jerry, wherever the heck he runs. Every time I speak, he runs out, yet I do a lot of business with him. So, I'm going to run out of his store next week. But, you know, they got to come to the table. And when you're going to have your meetings, have them openly public. Put the cameras on them.
We always do, Bob.
And, well, that's what we need. Make them accountable. Let the people really see who is doing what and who was doing everything against it. And I think you're definitely entitled, uh, to an apology from the Scranton Times. Sometimes they step over the border. They've censored letters I've written. They're going to see a nice truck coming out very shortly that's going to take care of their censorship because my truck is bigger than their newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Maureen Schumacher, I'll be as brief as, as I can because Joan and I have a twelve fifteen meeting up at City Hall.
Oh, lucky you.
And I only came for one, one thing, but then I got a couple of phone calls and it's more than that. Uh, and also my, my reassessment button got pushed this morning when I was doing my recordings of the property transactions for Lackawanna County and found a property that was assessed at twenty thousand nine hundred dollars, had a sale price, which is really the true market value of twenty-seven thousand dollars. There are too many of those. And I will be back. Again, I keep promising and then other things come up, but I will be back with what I think is a possible solution. And in the meantime, I would like to know the status of the HUP mailing. Nonprofits are just not all, do not meet all five criteria. I'm convinced of that. Uh, second, uh, speaking of buttons getting pushed, uh, and this is, was one of the phone calls, but also a personal one that I was going to put off, but there's no time like the president. Uh, there was a, a article in the Times Tribune about a voter outreach program, a registration. And it was held on March first. And, and it stated that people who were interested should bring their driver's license. And then it also noted that there would be, that was the first red button. And the second was that it noted that there would be, uh, representatives of two of the minority communities there. Uh, I have no problem with that, but it seems to me that they would not be needed unless they were going to be there for translation. And since a driver's license can be given to anybody, if they are using that as, uh, proof of citizenship, it's obviously not. And I think we need proof of citizenship. When I go to vote for the first time, I have to show a picture ID. I think when a person goes to register to vote for the first time, they should show that they are, especially if they're, I'm sorry about this, it sounds, well, I'm not, but it sounds prejudicial. But if a person can't speak English, then how, I have to question how they got through the rigors of becoming a citizen. So, uh, I, I think that need, that whole thing needs to be looked into because if a lot of people are being convinced to vote that are not eligible, it is we, the taxpayers, who bear the burden, the brunt, especially where there are close races. So, I would like to request that we look into using, uh, proof. Uh, the third one is, uh, on all of the, all of the items today, raises and things, uh, some savings, were they already incorporated into the budget? Or are they additive to?
They'll be, they were not incorporated. The savings that we garnered today?
Well, savings and expenditures, the raises and, uh, and the savings on the building for this, you know, for the annual year? They're incorporated into the budget already?
No.
No.
No, we're not supposed to, I'm not going to answer this.
Okay. Uh, then, um, the next one is, uh, again, the mall. Uh, are we going to have to pay? Well, I walk, so, I mean, it doesn't really matter to me. But for other people who might want to come to the county commissioners' meetings, uh, when you move into the Globe Store, I assume the parking is going to be, uh, at the mall. Are we going to have to pay, uh, for parking? Or are we going to be validated if we come to our meeting?
Okay, I'll answer that.
And where, where are the employees going to park and who's going to pay for that? Is that incorporated into the budget?
I'll answer when we get to that point.
Okay, and I'll look forward to that. Maybe, maybe I'll have to look at the video. Uh, and now, um, the reason that I, I'm here, that I wanted to come, is even though it's looking a lot more like Christmas outside, uh, we're really facing Easter and, and Holy Week come, come Sunday. And that's what I want to talk about. I finally took the time to look at the RFP for the change of the monuments. And again, I did walk the, walk the trail and almost everybody, there are quotations. And the person who stated that is named. There's few, there's one anonymous and there's another one that refers to a book. But it seems we've gone from bad to worse because the, what's in the RFP is to remove anonymous and replace with John fifteen thirteen KJV. Now, that is one chapter of a book of the Holy Bible. Uh, where do you go to find John? If I go to the library and ask for John, probably not going to get it. I think it's important. What that quote was is whoever acknowledges me before others, I will also acknowledge before my Father. Oops, nope, that's not the right one. It's the one that says, "No greater love has a man than to give his life for another." It is excerpt, this John fifteen thirteen is part of Christ's farewell speech to his disciples. And within days of making this speech, he is going, he himself is going to give his life, not for one person or one few people, but for all of mankind if they will just come to him. And the thing that bothers me most, I mean, that's, you know, one thing, but also in the Bible, and this is again from, from his lips, whoever acknowledges me before others, I will also acknowledge before my Father in heaven. But whoever disowns me before others, I will disown before my Father in heaven. You people represent a lot of Christians in this community. And I take this, my interpretation is the fact that you won't, would not say Jesus Christ or Jesus. Really, I find it offensive and, but more importantly, I think it's denying. And I don't want anybody to not be able to go to heaven because somebody was afraid to say the, the name Jesus. And I'm sorry that this board elected to make it almost impossible to find the true speaker of that quote, that it will be on the monument.
That's not set in stone. I'm still fighting that, so.
Oh. Thank you. I, I will be taking off, not like a truce, but my walking ability.
We got your answer to that one. That's not done yet.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, two twenty Linden Street, Scranton. Going back to this intermediate punishment plan update document. This board, this advisory board, which repeatedly is identified in the document as the Lackawanna County Prison Board, was established in two thousand one, so it's been in existence for seventeen years. Mr. Wallace said they meet either semi-annually or annually, although the document says they meet monthly. Can you tell me, you've been in, in office now twenty-seven or so months, when did this advisory board last meet?
I have no idea.
I'm getting a bad feeling here that we have this program on paper and every two years, somebody, you know, gets the word processor and changes the dates and sends it forward and nobody's looking at it critically. I understand that Mary Liz has just been in the job six weeks and this kind of slipped under her radar. So, she should not be held accountable. But I would like to see you all, you've passed the resolution. Now go back and fix the document. And I want to know is when you're going to schedule your first advisory board meeting? Because I would like to attend. I've never heard of this before. Okay? And I want to know what you're going to do about appointing a member of the press? Because I'm sorry to have to say this, but if any entity in Lackawanna County needs expanded oversight, it's the prison and everything associated with it. And that, and right now, you know, we got to get that fixed. Every year or so, we're having a new scandal. You know, I mean, even when I was in the military, my parents used to cut out articles and mail them to me. You know, and it's just been going on continuously since I came back in ninety-eight. So, please, I'm going to ask you again and again, where's the updated version of this? When is the first meeting? And why hasn't, why haven't there been regular meetings? I mean, if you've been in office twenty-seven months and you've never met?
They might have, I didn't know.
Something's wrong. Somebody, somebody needs to read this line by line. Is Judge Durallo still, still chairing this court or this, this element? I mean, I think, I don't think anybody proofread this. Okay, and this, this is important, given the fact that we're having such systemic problems at the prison. Okay, I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I would like, I'm going to ask you again this next meeting, speaking of the next meeting. Weren't you all supposed to meet somewhere else once a quarter and what happened to that?
We're going to talk about that and you're going to be happy.
Okay, well, that's fine. I'll be listening. Okay. Now, with regard to the legal fees, um, uh, associated with the prison, I'm glad that Mr. DeBilio brought up the fact that we've accumulated two hundred and sixty thousand dollars with forty thousand still outstanding. Can you tell me what line item, or I mean, where's this coming from out of the, out of the budget? Is this being sucked out of the general fund? Or is there a specific line item to cover these legal fees? Or are we going to have to dock some other line item because we're accruing all this, these fees? What are we doing with this? Do we have a line item for legal fees for, you know, prison scandals? Or are we, where we take, is there a contingency fee that you're, you're, where's, where's this money coming from out of the budget? Are you docking some other line item? Can, if you don't have the answer now, I will ask at your next meeting where you're getting that money. And again, I'll ask, what is the current thing? Because I think you're going to go way above three hundred thousand dollars. Okay? I'm going to want to know, well, where, where out of the budget are you taking it? Okay? Um, let's see. And if you haven't been there, you are invited to come see the beautiful Scranton Public Library. It may be the Scranton Public Library, but it's a county asset. And it is well worth a visit. Thank you.
Joan, we're going to answer that question because they do meet, but it's not a requirement for us to be there. We're going to have Judge Durallo get up and say a few words about the, the meetings.
Judge chairs that committee.
Judge chairs it. It's not a requirement, it's not a requirement for us to be there. We know that it's there, but it's not a requirement.
Well, this document needs to be rewritten.
Okay, just so you know.
You know, I mean, this document is surprising to me.
Joan, let, let, let the judge get up and say a few words.
But I would like to see some publicity about this advisory board. And if it's open to public meetings, I'd like to see something legal in the paper. And y'all come, because I would be interested in attending. And I still want to know the answer on who's the member of the press that sits on it? The document says it's supposed to be a member of the press. That'd be a good idea for the prison board, by the way.
Let's have the, let's.
More oversight is better.
Let's have the judge get up and just let, know in the meeting.
They passed this resolution.
The grand app.
And you're down there.
Uh-huh.
Okay, and they keep saying that it's now the Lackawanna County Prison Board, all throughout the document. Here's where you're supposed to have a member of the press. You're supposed to have monthly board meetings.
Okay. Well, the, the prison board and the Criminal Justice Advisory Board are two totally different animals. Uh, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board, uh, is just as it says, advisory. Uh, it doesn't have any legislative power and it doesn't have any executive power. It is a meeting of the heads or representatives of all of the players that are involved in the criminal justice system. So, that includes the courts, the district attorney, the public defender's office, the sheriff's office, the clerk of judicial records, the court administrator's office, drug and alcohol, um, organizations, uh, the mental health organizations, uh, the, any entity that has any involvement whatsoever with the criminal justice system. Because we recognized a number of years ago, I would say about ten years ago, that the, in order to function, that every component of the criminal justice system had to be aware of what the other components were doing and be able to cooperate with them. If I am a judge and sitting there demanding, like, where are my prisoners this afternoon that I have to impose sentence on? I should have some appreciation for the difficulties that the sheriff might have in transporting them that day, in coordinating that with the prison authorities. Do they have them dressed and ready on time? Did the DA's office send the appropriate gig sheets? That's the order to transfer somebody. Uh, and was that in fact communicated to the sheriffs? So, in order for the overall system to work, the individual parts have to work. So, the real function of our board is to coordinate the activities. A big part of our meetings, uh, while they are, uh, scheduled to be monthly, uh, I'm not a believer in having meetings just for the sake of having a meeting. When there is a need for it, we call it. But we generally would have, uh, between six and nine meetings a year, um, on the average. I've been the chair of that board for about five years. Um, and, but a big part of the meeting is, uh, we will go around to the head of each department that is there and seek input from them. What problems is your office having this week or this month? Uh, what are the issues that are there? How can we help coordinate that with the others? So, it is, is really, as much as an advisory opinion, uh, board, it could also be a coordinating board. All right? I hope I've answered your questions.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
No, but, um, a, a member of the press is not, uh, a component of the criminal. No, you, you were referring to the prison board. What you just showed me here is the prison board.
That's, that's the incorrect name.
The, you know, that's what the, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board is. And we seek the input from any and all. We have the local police, the state police, um, the.
Are the county commissioners on the advisory board?
The county commissioners are invited to attend, but it's up to them whether or not they do. Uh, but as I said, they have, the Criminal Justice Advisory Board has neither, uh, executive nor legislative powers. It is advisory.
So, the, the member of the press should be on the prison board?
I'm not saying that. The prison board is defined by law. All right? The Criminal Justice Advisory Board, uh, is something that, to the best of my knowledge, uh, originated with Judge Harha when he was the president judge. And that's when it was organized. It has existed since that time. And there is, uh, a number of state, uh, papers that have been issued in support of it. And generally, people, uh, looking for grants, whether it's the EOTC or the Women's Resource Center, uh, they will generally seek the support of the advisory board. Women's Resource Center, they will generally seek the support of the advisory board if they are seeking a grant, because what they're looking for is, will it have an impact on our system? And I generally express that.
Okay, that's good things.
I have no problem with that. That document is riddled with ambiguities and false information and should have been screened before the resolution got passed.
I don't know what you're talking about, ma'am. You always have great ideas. I know your commitment and interest in the matters that affect the taxpayers, and especially the criminal system, because of my experience on the prison board. But I came in here for another purpose, and I was asked if I would explain what the Cjab is. All right?
Thanks, I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
That's what I tried to tell you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, commissioners, other business.
First thing I want to say is, I want to let everyone know that someone in the community passed away that means a lot to myself and many other people, and one of our employees, Doreen Brown from Old Forge, passed away yesterday. And she was a very strong, active woman in the Republican Party, as well as someone who I admire tremendously. We're talking about a woman who worked probably all the way up until her last breath, because that's just the way she was made. And she, her only ability to move on her own entire body was her, was her mouth and face at this point, from what I understand. And she still managed to answer the phone and talk to people and, you know, work for some of the people that she supported. And she will be very, very missed in our community, and I'm sure throughout our county, not just in Old Forge. And I just want to make sure that I mention her and ask for you all to keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers. She's a tremendous, tremendous loss to the community. The Bricks Building, Joan, I'd like to just also thank the owner of that building for all the work that he's done at my request, because there's a lot of things that he did on his own that he didn't have to, and I appreciate that. I think I've answered all the information that you need on the bike study, unless there's any other questions, but, you know, I just think we could spend our money a lot better and more wisely. And, you know, that's basically my whole philosophy, is just trying to be as transparent as I can, and trying to cut our budget, and trying to cut taxes, which I haven't been able to do, but I'm hoping to one day be able to live up to that promise to the taxpayers. Mr. Bowles came in and continually talks about the mall, but this is the wrong, you need to go to the city and the school district and tell them to go ahead and bring that, bring that point in. So I mean, that, we can't do that as commissioners, but your school district certainly has the power to do that, and so does the city council, but apparently, they just don't want to. I don't know why. I'm sorry, that's the answer, because they're the only ones that can. Hub mail, the hub mailing, yeah, I think that's another tool. Everybody's always talking about tools in the toolbox, you know? We've pulled out three of them so far and actually implemented them as policy. And I believe, you know, Joan and Marie Schumac, Joan Hodowanitz and Marie Schumacher are correct on their questions on that. That needs to be completed, too, to help out, to see where there can be further allocations of funding for the city and the schools and the county. As far as the attorney fees for, that our controller brought up, it's, you know, where are these in our budget? Because I thought they just came out of Rick's office, is that correct? Is that where we allocate the funding?
Commissioner, there are some funds set aside, but in a budget for $100 million, you have pluses and minuses, and then we pay them, and then we do the adjustments at the end of the year. There's not a specific line item just for a million dollars for attorney fees at all. There is not.
I thought, I thought we had something.
We do have, we do have payments within our risk management budget.
Yes, risk management, thank you.
But they do not reflect the amount of money you're referring to.
Okay, well, it's quite a large amount, so I'm trying to make sure I can read this. That's not it. I don't know if they have a total at the end. I don't want to go through each individual one. Yeah. Okay, so open and or closed, we have, I'm assuming this is in millions, 1.5 settlement amount, and then the county portion was $192,903. County's legal fee, 513, 254. And then total cost of the county was 706,158. Does that sound right, Kevin?
I'm not sure what project you're talking about.
I had a, from 2015, I asked for the legal fees from 2015 to 2018, and there's multiple fees here, so.
You wouldn't have that near on this point.
Okay.
That would be related to the prison, I think, is seven itself losses related to the prison. That's what I thought that was.
Right. Lackawanna County prison cases, January 2015 to 2018, yes. Yeah.
He was talking about something different. He's talking about the payment of legal fees on our, on our monthly bills.
Correct.
Still wasn't dealing with the prison, though, right?
Yes, I was referring to the most recent prison investigation.
Right.
Legal fees.
Okay. Well, it's a lot of money. I mean, I, you know, I mean, this is, this is an issue. This is why I'm always talking about privatizing the prison. And unfortunately, it looks like the costs there are just out of control, no matter which year you look at, whether it's overtime, or legal fees, or, you know, whatever. But I wish there was more we could do. And there's a long line waiting out at the door, so I'm just, I said a lot during this meeting, I'm done. Thank you.
Commissioner Otero, any?
I think those legal fees have to be a little bit further also, but we do have a salary board meeting scheduled for.
Yes, we do, so stick around.
Yeah, we have a prison board meeting scheduled for 1:30 this afternoon. So on that note, thank you.
Yes, we do have those meetings, and we did run a little bit longer than we should. But I'm not sure what the investigating would be. You know, our solicitors came forward with the numbers that are from that law group, and I'm not sure what kind of investigating we have there. But getting back to a couple of questions that were asked, the pay parking, we don't, we don't validate any tickets for anybody in our buildings right now. We never have, and that's not going to be happening in the future if somebody comes and does business with the county. And we have nothing locked in, actually, on parking itself. I mean, we have some, I mean, we use some parking for some of our administrative staff and CYS parking, which is paid for through the state. So, I mean, there are things that are absolute right now at this point. Bob had asked about the PTSD doctor that he brought in from Florida. The county has, we don't have money for a grant like that, but what we could maybe do is, maybe you could reach out to George. We have a really good grant option called East Sevitz, and see if there's something out there for something towards that. It's supposed to cover every single thing. We bought the program for the county about two years ago, and we can utilize it for just about anything. So I'm not sure if it would be for that type of situation, but it may be. So you can speak to George after the meeting. Just wanted to bring up real quick that we're going to be having the opening day for the Rail Riders on April 6th, great day up at the Rail Riders. Also, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe Easter and a happy Passover. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
One second. Real call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.